Sorry, the first thing we have to point out is the agenda.
I'll second.
She's second, they're on a roll. You're gonna need to add anything to it all. Everybody good? Alright, and all of us up here say aye?
Aye.
Oops.
Good, I'm glad you're in favor too. Well, that's okay. Good job.
Alright, so next one is visitor two, Jessica Borg, and this is a time for public comment on non agenda items. Things that aren't on our agenda this evening. And I believe, there are one that's set for this gender, it is yes. Alright, anyways, Borg will not take any immediate action on it, but we'll refer any concerns to superintendent and ask him to report to the board. We appreciate you keeping comments to three minutes per person, or five minutes if you're referring to any group of questions. So the first one, the guy.
Aldo, I think. Ada.
Okay, welcome.
Thank you.
And it looks like you've got funding and public scoping, or update.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. My question to Mr. Stockwell is, the informal public scoping meetings that were conducted before the COVID quarantine, did anybody track those and respond to those concerns from the community? And are they tracking and responding to the more recent public comments from the community? Is anybody from the school district doing that?
Are you referring to the listening sessions for strategic plan?
Yes.
Yeah, we have actually been compiling and finishing up draft on COVID.
How about pre-COVID?
Yeah, those are the pre-COVID.
Those, when will the public be able to see those interviews? Thank you. And then, last year's school board meeting, I had requested Mr. Stockwell that if you knew the amount of federal COVID funds the school district received, and I looked up in the budget, I couldn't make heads or tails of how much the district received. I requested the board, you provide that to the board, and that be presented at a future school board meeting. And I'd like to also know how much of college career planning, how much funding the school district applied towards college career planning from the 2021 school year? And again, I'd appreciate if you could present that to the board at a public meeting.
And just letting you know too, that we don't have a meeting until what, January?
Next year.
This year, yeah.
That's fine.
Happy end.
Happy new. Merry Christmas, thank you.
Alright, any other visitors, that was it, right? You ready? Okay, alright, so next one is the consent agenda, 4.0. Any objections or anything? Everybody, you've got to be clapping.
I moved that with consent agenda. I'll second.
Alright, it's by moving to second to accept the consent agenda stated. All of us in favor, say aye. Alright, so next is 5.0, is it being? Tell me again, I don't want to set a wrong.
Amelia.
And is this the one we're watching for our?
Go Beavers. You can wear that proudly for a whole year.
So, like we said, I'm Amelia Watkins, I'm the ASB Public Relations Officer. I'm just gonna tell you a little bit about what events have been going on at the high school recently. On December 1st, we had the blood drive. We reached our goal of 29 donors, with 16 of them being first-time donors, and we saved 87 lives. And that is our lovely volunteer group, leadership group, and some people donating as well. Jazz played at, or jazz band played at the Skyview Jazz Festival on December 3rd, and they placed first in their division. And the band also had a holiday bazaar that had over 50 vendors with silent auction items and raffle prizes. As far as I know, that went well.
It was fantastic.
Giving Tree is going on right now, actually. We are supporting a family from our school district with three young boys. They made an Amazon wishlist, and people were gonna buy off of that wishlist, and the gifts got wrapped today after school by our leadership team. Winter Spirit Week is going on right now. Our dress-up days are Monday was Blizzard Out, so we're all white, but you can see the picture right up there. Tuesday, ugly sweater day, which you could see one of our teachers getting in on it with another student. And then, today was Santa Sleigh, so anything but a backpack. Thursday is fuzzy socks and flannels, and then Friday is dress up as your favorite holiday movie character. Along with Winter Spirit Week, we are doing a caroling contest, which is an old tradition that we are trying to revive this year. And so, all the different, all grades got to pick their own carol to sing, and the assembly will be uploaded, or sorry, it will be included in our virtual assembly, which will be uploaded tomorrow onto YouTube. And bottom left is our senior class recording theirs, and the bottom right is our junior class. And lastly, Winter Ball is coming up on January 28th. It will be hosted at the Columbia City Elementary School, and the theme is Black and White Masquerade.
Did you include the picture of signing out the microphone over on?
Nobody can hear you. Y'all ready, yeah? Well, I remember caroling contests, and that makes them really old, but I'm thrilled. And that was such a good community, and what my thing do, so. Alright, well then, school report, and which one should I start, my high school work down? Okay, let's start with the. Oh, yeah, that's actually, okay. Are you ready?
So I am Jane Boylan, I run Early Learning for our school district, and for our two positives and something we're working on, for our positives as of January, it's very, all of our staffing is filled, we have no vacant positions for all three locations. Really nice, not having to do it for our interviews or anything, we've got a great team going forward into the new year. I wasn't at the last board meeting because I was in the NYC POC, so the National Association of Education for Little Children. The children's institute grant paid for me and five other people from our districts to go, and some kindergarten teacher, preschool teacher, and first grade teacher, and we just held a meeting, and we focused all on day-based inquiry trainings for the most part, and our teachers came out of it yesterday just raving at our children's meeting about how much they learned, and how much did they just back into their classroom to make even first grade and kindergarten students learn fun again, instead of just sitting with worksheets and how they can implement those parts. And so, the children's institute granted buying cabinets for each of our locations, storage for those parts, and we need our gathering donations from local businesses to fill those cabinets for, the teachers have materials to use for creative life. I also got to go with our early childhood education teacher through a different branch to wear tech conference down in Las Vegas for a few days, and we focused on training of how to grow our own teachers. And so, we did a lot of trainings on how we can prepare them, not just in our learning, but in the older grade levels, as far as whether they are doing peer mentoring, and we're gonna try to set up some things, yes, the actual programs, to do tutoring with those kids, and then kind of the long-term goal of how we can get them to be their prepared, testing to be their educators at the schools when they graduate, as well as doing a CDA with Sarah, the app, like school program, that we will bring it to our learning programs as well. The one thing that we are currently working on is our five-star rating program with Dr. Fire Angel for our location, so we're working on doing that, and also leading our company to a new school, it's five-star rating. Five-star rating, for those who don't know, the state, it was a star rating based on quality of our program, and so, we have these giant folders of all the different categories, from program management to the kind of reviews of our program, the volunteer review of our program, to power classrooms we have set up, and we have some of that, and we're looking at flexibility, and for our first two locations, we have five-star impact. We're working on that technical for our third location.
Katie, how many five-star rated entries are there?
In, not a ton. Headstart, it's the benefit that they can use the same binder for all of their schools, they don't have to do individual like the rest of us, so all headstart card, and then we have two other ones. We've got a few that are three, and a few that are four, so.
Congrats. Glad you heard the bench. Thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, well, how about, we're bringing all three elementary.
I'm gonna turn our.
I didn't have anything else, so this is.
Well, that's yours.
That's my thing.
How very easy to talk about that.
Good evening, St. Helens School Board, Mr. Stockwell. I'm going, just excited to announce, well, first with my excitement, I should introduce myself. Roger Fink, Principal at McBride. I'm very excited, excited to announce a fantastic attendance rate for our recent parent-teacher conferences. I know it was three weeks ago, but I'm still very excited to share, 90% attendance is just fantastic for parent and family participation. Of course, I want to give credit to our teachers and staff that worked hard to communicate, welcome invite, and set up a really helpful, informative event, so it's a win-win-win for our parents, our teachers, and of course, our students. More excitement, because of that event, we're looking at data, we're looking at information of where students are. We're still seeing a need for increase in literacy and specific reading and reading comprehension. And so, in a recent coffee chat event, several parents did say, it would be wonderful if we could come into the school, maybe listen to some of the strategies that teachers are using, so that we can do those at home with our own children. So we're already looking at setting up events where parents can come in in the morning to the library, kindergarten, first grade at this time, and have some instructional strategies for parents to support their children at home. Because as we all know, the primary obligation and responsibility we have is teaching kids to read, so that they could read to learn, and really, that's the process, and we want to make sure that we support that and do as best job as we can, and of course, we need parent support. A challenge I want to share, this goes along for everybody, but there's just been such concern, issue with illnesses and sicknesses, and usual this time of year, attendance for students is about 11 or 12% absenteeism, and we're seeing 17%. It's quite high because of the viruses and whatnot going around. I know that's really nothing that we can control directly, but just know it does impact our schools, and it does impact when we also have staff that are sick. And with our sub-s shortage, please know that we do our best to make sure that we're providing priority in the classroom, we're maintaining specials, so we have music, steam, library, and PE, we're maintaining those processes as best we can to support students. It remains a challenge, but we're doing our best to solve that. I want to end on a positive. I heard today that there was some, a fish launch, and I'm happy to share that four McBride students went along and were able to release, boy, please excuse me, because I don't know the name for baby salmon.
Fry.
Thank you very much, okay. So Fry were released, and you can just see from photos and pictures, and that's been shared with Stacy Mendoza, so she can share that publicly. But it's just wonderful to see students excited, and to have that done, you know, in downtown St. Helens, just adds to that community. So, just a benefit for our students and our city. Okay, that's my report. Any questions? Thank you all.
Good evening, Martine Barnett, Principal of Lewis and Clark. And I'm excited to share that we have begun the work on launching conscious disciplines school-wide. We have quite a few teachers who were early adopters of the approach that helps build community in the school, and belonging, and creating a school-family and type of atmosphere in the school. So those early adopted teachers are great examples and models, and are sharing the changes that they're seeing in their classrooms with other staff, and kind of sparking the excitement for exploring this, this new approach, that we're seeing great results with building of empathy and kindness in our classrooms. So we're excited for that. And our teachers are also jumping back into some work that began prior to COVID, the quality assessment practices, and we just kind of started with a reset of learning targets to bring back that focus on instruction and that intention in our teaching, so students know what they're learning about, and they can articulate that, so it's exciting to see that work. And much like Mr. Fink, I think the substitute shortage continues to be difficult. Our staff is doing an amazing job. And we've had classified staff with emergency teaching licenses that are pitching in, and we're making all the critical positions work. But it's hard to see some of our more proactive supports, we're not able to fully do those when we're all kind of pitching in and shifting around to fill all the various roles. So, just hope that we can get some additional outside substitutes coming into our.
Thank you.
I'm Chris Williams, Principal, St. Helens. And I have it on my phone if you can ring up. So I have a Riverhawk School Report, which I will share two successes, and one thing that we're working on currently. First, success number one is the development and training of our counselors. For those of you that don't know, we have two full-time counselors, certified counselors, working at the middle school now. And this is the first time in five years that both counselors, we had both positions filled, and they started the school year with us. So, it's been a huge benefit, but it also comes with, they're both very new to the profession, and so they're going through some pretty heavy training this year. And not only by experience, but also we're sending them to, they just completed the sexual incident response training, which is very important, and pretty heavy stuff to learn about. And they've also gone through this year the threat assessment training, which we unfortunately have experienced those threats at our schools, and we need well-trained counselors to know how to respond in those situations. In addition, they've also traveled recently to Florida, to be avid trained, so y'all there both are avid trained counselors. So, pretty awesome success, and they're growing and developing very rapidly, it's good to have them on your team. Our second success centers around our spirit weeks and our climate and culture at St. Helens Middle School. This week, we have a spirit week again. Last time I presented, we were in the middle of the spirit week, and here we are, before we go off to holiday break. We have dress-up days this week, they're listed up there. Monday was ugly holiday sweater, Tuesday, holiday twins, today was holiday pajamas, and we had lots of people in pajamas today. A lot of employees, very comfortable today. Thursday, which is tomorrow, we have winter colors, and then Friday, they have a grade level spirit color. So you're supposed to represent your grade level by wearing the voted-on color for that grade level. And then we're capping off the week with a spirit assembly. The thing that we're working on, I presented last time, and it's the development of our professional learning teams. We've made some great progress, so I put it up here again because I wanted to highlight the two aspects that we've made progress on now. So we're in this process of choosing the essential standards for every course at every grade level at our site, and then mapping them out in a standard alignment. We're currently in the middle of developing those plans. But the great part about this is, we sent a team of teachers who teach those core content areas to an RTI at Work Conference in Pasadena, where they got exposure to systems of intervention that can happen during the school day for all students, and a way to do that, that makes sure that all students are achieving at grade level, and we're addressing those gaps in those standards specifically. So, that team came back and got to share a little bit today, and we went to work today, actually, during PD time on those two steps. And we're preparing for next year to have a systematic, school-wide, during-the-day time where students can go and address those gaps, and whether it be an assessment, or whether it be some form of practice, to prepare to meet those standards in those courses. It's pretty heavy work for our teachers, and it was a really wonderful conference that outlined very practically how different schools and different size and different makeup can implement these systems. And we walked away with a really clear plan of what we're gonna allow next year, once all of our standards are aligned across each core content. That is the Riverhawk School Report.
Okay, I can enter our P I.
Oh, yeah, sorry, it's up there, and I did, response to intervention. So there are three tiers of intervention. Tier one happens in the classroom, it's universal, it's available to everybody, and the teacher delivers it. Tier two is typically something that happens in addition to what happened in the classroom, usually outside of that classroom setting, or in another setting, more refined and more specific, and targeted to a need of the student, or of an individual or smaller group of students. And then tier three is bringing outside resources or more serious supports in to deal with something that maybe can't be managed by a teacher, or need support from another professional. Our tier-two interventions that we're focusing on now are things like addressing certain reading skills that are absent in kids, and not allowing them to meet a standard in their humanities class, or a specific lack of a skill or a piece of knowledge in a math class, and they're not able to pass the assessment. So how do we get that student systematically in the school day into a place where we can give direct instruction on that gap? And then we measure the response, right? So that's the response to intervention is, we're looking at how our students respond to these interventions. Are they growing and meeting the standards, or do we need to look at a different?
Does this also lead them to an individual learning plan, or most of the time it's just for behavior?
Great question. Individual learning plan would actually happen at that tier-three level. Yep, so if we couldn't solve the problem at that tier-two level with systematic interventions with our teachers, then we would look at, yes, other groups or other settings or other supports to meet that tier-three. Any other questions?
I just don't want to, normally just to be anything back a lot, and I forgot from when I was on school floor, but kids at our home. In the very beginning, I know that we, I know that we've talked to kids, we've talked to parents when kids are even struggling to even just figure out how to learn something, but like, do we honestly sit down with that kid and ask him what it is that they need? Because I just can't remember an awful lot of times, that even in math, we'll just throw that out there, that it was one little thing that made it so that you couldn't understand where everybody in the rest of the classroom was getting it. And it's also because you actually did math maybe differently.
Sure.
You know, you may look at it different ways, but at the same time, without getting that little help, whether they act out, or they're frustrated, and then they just quit everything, so that was always a screw. Sometimes you don't need that second verbal.
You're right, if we can just address it there with some universal strategies that everybody's using, or conversations with the students, and you know, supporting them on where their gaps are. But tier-two systematically is designed for exactly what you're, what you're talking about, is to identify what are those pieces that those students need, and get them to the right place with, in front of the right teacher who has the skills to do that work with them. And it's built into their schedule, so they don't have to come after school, because we know a lot of those students don't have that opportunity from under school, or they don't have to come before school, because maybe that's a struggle for them. So, we want to build it into the schedule, so that all students have that opportunity.
The conferences are great though, because my fifth grader sat there, and I said, well, if she's wearing her glasses, that she's having issue? No, she's not, but wearing her glasses, that would help in math, when she's supposed to be taking notes.
That's what I'm saying, that's just not the last thing, it's just one little, small thing, and it's all with it.
Yeah, sometimes it is, very simple.
Yeah, we're starting. Good evening, Ted Hurning, System Principal at High School. Katie said keep it to five, six pages, so. No, yeah, no. So yeah, unfortunately, Dr. Wagner had another commitment, so I'm going in and presenting tonight. To piggyback on Mr. Williams a little bit, you know, some of our successes, we had, we sent some staff members to the RTI conference last week in Pasadena. They came back, and every one of them said it was probably the best conference they've ever been to, and they're very excited to get going. They, we went over a little bit of it in PD today, and just to develop systems for collaboration, engaging instruction, and focus on students' high achievement. And it's, and it's every student, so I know, you're talking about the three tiers, we don't just want to focus on that one tier, we want to focus on all three, and make sure every student is being successful. So that's, that's our upcoming goal. I know Dr. Wagner has already got books, this Taking Action book, which they've got at the conference, so our unit leaders will be going through that, and we've set up a plan. We've already have kind of a built-in time with our enrichment time, so it'll be a perfect opportunity to start doing these interventions with all students, so we're excited about that. We did send a couple key staff members to the Avid National Conference in Orlando last week. They, they hadn't been before, they, the only avid really exposure they've had was at PD's, and they came back, super incited, Mr. Norton and Mr. Burkett, our math and science teacher, and they were super excited today. They shared some strategies they learned at the conference, and look forward to sharing those with staff in the future, and some of the systems and things they picked up while there. I wanted to focus real quick, I know, I know you had mentioned the success of our band, which is great, and I know we've got athletics, winter athletics is in full effect here, so we have successes going on there. I just want, I can't, Mr. Stockwell, you're a wrestler, so I think it's, gonna say that our wrestling team has attended two tournaments. Our boys won both tournaments, and these were of 23 teams or more. And then our girls team went up to Rainier with 23 teams, and they took first by a huge margin. And then the last tournament in Portland was a little tougher, but they took fourth there, so they're off to a great start. Over the winter break, our boys basketball and girls basketball competing in multiple tournaments in Portland, the wrestling team will be in a tournament. And then tomorrow night, if anyone's around, the swim team will be taking on Scappus at Eisen Schmidt Pool, so get out and support the Lions if you can. And then one last positive, I gotta say it, because Mr. Amos, if you haven't been out to the Restoration Project House, I went out two weeks ago, and I hadn't been out there yet, and I was amazed at what Mr. Mock, Mr. Amos, and those students are doing. You don't realize it until you get out there and see it, and see them actually working. So, I just, that is an awesome program, and I just applaud everyone that is a part of it. And if you haven't seen it, I encourage you to get out and go check it out. Couple of things that we're kind of focusing on in growth is just a continued collaboration with community partners in areas of mental health. We have met with a few people from Columbia County Public Health, and trying to get some systems down, just prevention curriculum, school policy support, support for staff, and then just general family and community support. So, that's an area where, you know, it's, we're always growing in that, and I feel like we really need to make some bigger steps in it. And Suzanne Boprae from Columbia County Public Health has been great in reaching out, and she's got great ideas, so we are really moving forward fast with that one. And that is all I have, any questions? I know, I was, I was excited. I know, I was, I was exaggerating.
Thank you.
You mean, yeah? Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you.
I know, but she told me she didn't want some. Well, we've got lots of... Oh, you got, okay. All right, well, okay. We can stand. I did turn that here. I'm gonna move this out of the way. Turn this. And hopefully I can figure out how to use this. Great thought. Yeah. You. Okay, can I get the...
I'm gonna lose everybody's hands yet.
All right, well, good evening. I'm Jennifer Mandersher, I'm Principal at Columbia City Elementary, and I am so glad to bring our crew here to meet you. Last year, we were able to share our ELA modules that we from EL Education. And our second grade, we had a beautiful job with pollinators, but this year, we want to tell you a little bit more about character and culture, the work that we do there, and how that supports student-focused learning. But first of all, I'd like to be hiding back here, I'd like to introduce you to Mr. Tony Althacker. He's from EL Education, and he's been a great support for us since we're at the past three years. Is I'll take the one?
Sure, thanks. You've been bored? You need to do something? So, a little bit of a script here, which is nice.
You don't have to.
So, EL Education was founded almost 30 years ago with a mission of redefining student achievement to diverse communities across the country, ensuring that all students master rigorous content, develop positive character, and produce high-quality work. And so EL works to create great public schools by inspiring teachers and students to achieve more than they thought possible. EL Education model fosters and celebrates students' character development by building a culture in which students and staff work together to become effective learners and ethical people who contribute to a better world. So tonight, we had a chance to see a little bit of that.
All right, and we're almost somewhere around here. All right.
Good evening. My name is Gretchen Ramos. Sorry. My name is Gretchen Ramos. I have been with the district for seven years, and have the pleasure of being with our community for four and a half years. In my current position as the Community Owner engaged on, part of my role has been to help create a means of community and learning to celebrate your differences in terms of students, dads, and families, and to engage as a part of the group. So tonight, we'd like to highlight three core principles. Create a community of learning, foster the habit of character, school culture, and crew. Crew is everyone working together to create a learning community where everyone belongs and agrees.
All right, well, with the help of Mr. Althacker, we've also been working on purpose and clear instruction through the use of learning targets. So I would be remiss if I did not give you your learning targets. Learning targets are extremely important for students or learners to know what the focus is. They're always in I-can statements, and it allows you to, to focus in on the important work, so you can check, say, "Ooh, did I get what they were trying to share?" It also is a way for me to check to make sure that I shared the information that I wanted to. So today, we're going to share crew with you, as you can see that. So hopefully, when we're done, you will be able to describe what crew means at Columbia City Elementary and get examples of how it is part of the daily life of a Columbia City bar. We're going to talk about character. I can name a real-world application of character development and extrapolate how this work will help Columbia students, city students contribute to a better world. And finally, we do recognize AVID as a big part of our district, and we are, we are partnering with it as well. So I can name one AVID strategy that has been combined with an EL core practice and explain how these strategies help support Columbia students, city students to be effective learners. So several of our crew members, adult crew members, were able to go to a national conference last week as well. And at that conference, we had the pleasure of listening to Dr. Goldie Mohammed present to us. She was presenting cultivating genius, really, how do we build responsive schools? And this tree is part of her work. And as you can see, the foundation of that bottom part of learning is identity, having kids have a strong sense of themselves and being part of that school, and joy. And so those are the two things that we're, we've really been focusing on as we've opened up Columbia City, because you can't get to the upper branches if we don't, they don't know that they're part of our crew, they don't have joy in school. So that is why I brought our crew here, because in EL education, our kids are the most important part of everything. So I have brought several of our fourth, third, and fifth grade students to share with you. So I'm gonna have you guys move back here so they can actually see you. Come on out, and right there. All right.
My name is Carolyn. It's cooking fire on a living room floor. We are fourth and fifth grade students, Miss Walmart. I have attended Columbia City since Tina Wyden, we have school reopen, we have started our daily morning readings. Last year, we started a maiden theme for our school. Your crew is for everyone. Each crew is made up of kindergarten and fifth grade students and one staff member. Each staff member has a crew, including art and school for studying, thinking, that everyone did it. As a matter of fact, Ms. Mandersher is mine and our honor code. We are called Otters Forever and have a sacred, secret reading, and we see each other in halls, big, big, big. Pretty Angelina. I am also an Otter Forever. Our crew is a meet every three weeks for about 25 minutes. When we meet, we always start with a greeting, because it is important to know each other. We then usually have a quote or a lesson to help us to learn about how to be a good citizen.
Hi, I'm Audrey. I'm a red expert. Our crew name, our group is the Silver. Go great third grade and focus on the passion. The work that shines by giving family deep meaning and love and respect, they, they caring about the man, the self-care. Keep my presence and spell someone that you can, or do what you feel like doing there is very much. Our crew also help non-our school community. Last year, each crew worked together to hunt off a project to help along the community. Some of our crews chose to help our school by making a positive motion, giving passion, other healthy things. Other crews work on helping our local human society, spreading thoughts where children trust, the children trust you and write cards of passion. Our work was celebrated at the national conference this year. It is pretty cool, we had people all the way out in Chicago for our school and learning about how we care for our community. For myths we ask that should lead to us, I should work hard, we have crew for kindness we have. We have fun doing this, I like people, because we make people happy, and we did it as a group.
We also have some new this year called Otter Squad. Otter Squad is made up of a fifth-grade student that have a wide range of jobs, such as the bus helper, assisting in the kitchen to help our cafeteria staff, and basketers to bring guests at our school.
So at Columbia City Elementary, we feel strongly about creating opportunities for students to find purpose and sense of community within our school. We're excited this year to create the Otter Squad for fifth-grade students. And the Otter Squad, as Ariana mentioned, is a group of students who have the opportunity to look at different job openings, fill out an application, and then eventually interview for that job. We started that back in, we bought covers, we're doing it for a few months now, but some of those opportunities that the Otter Squad has is working as a teacher aide, working as kitchen staff, office staff, we even have some of our, our Otter helps to read school. Bus helpers, there are all kinds of different jobs within the school that look at greater opportunity.
Patrick Berkeley teaches third grade at Columbia City, a retired teacher who could not stay away and was offered the opportunity as a substitute to hire on at Columbia City. One of the things that attracted me, dramatic retirement for a full time, was the EL program, and especially with its emphasis on developing character as well as scholarship. So we were very hardly to develop, worked very hard to develop that character with our, our crew members, especially through critical thinking and development of the intellect, but focused on character development to make the world a better place. So in third grade, we try to blend in developmentally appropriate ways, ways to organize, break down material, and present learning targets for students in a way that will come together seamlessly, you know, by the time they're in middle school, with the AVID program. So the elements of EL correspond very closely to the roles of AVID. And one of the things we've done then in third grade is we developed a planner, and there's Chloe with an example, and she might be able to show you the real thing. But every week, in addition to looking at the learning targets, we asked the students to choose a character goal that they will work on during that week. And then on Friday, at the end of the week, we asked them to do a weekly reflection on how they feel about that group. And I have to say, the students hold me accountable, I think all of us are accountable as well. My character goal this week was to keep my composure when I observe students engaging in activities that I don't like, but thinking before I react. So we invited Chloe here to share her character goal and how it is helping.
Hello, my name is Chloe. It's a weekend here, so we're looking at how to find a narrative. The daily learning target taught you to remember what we are going to, what we are doing during the day. It helps all of us in the classroom what we are going to.
Well, just to wrap up, I wanted to share some, some awards that EL Education has received in a recent study. So as we know, when we came back from distance learning, Oregon Department of Education really asked us to focus on social emotional learning, because that was such an important part. Well, CAPSOL is part of his organization that looked at social emotional learning. Many can strike, someone else, one would say. EL Education was awarded the Collaboration for Academic Social and Emotional Learning, the highest rating program that meets or exceeds all of CAPSOL's rigorous criteria for self-based education. And then when we were at the national conference, there was a study that was just released from the University of Virginia, that's some really important parts that we think is really true at our school. EL education students are more likely to say that their teachers care about them than their peers. EL education students understand concepts like respect and empathy differently than their peers with more complexity, connection to action, and acceptance of difference. And finally, EL education teachers experience a more positive school culture and climate, and they bring this positive culture to their classrooms. That's what the board is just saying. So I couldn't bring a whole school here, I'd love to, and I'm not sure I know how to do this, are you able to do it? But I do have a few staff members and students that want to share just a little bit more in here, more than...
What do I like best about Columbia City? I love the sense of community that we have here.
What do you think about our school crew?
Our school crew shows kindness, and it shows learning, and it shows compassion and heart.
So Stella, tell us about your crew.
My crew is Ms. Yeghurt's crew, and I like crew because we get together with other people from other classes, and we kind of get to know them, even though we're in different classes.
All right, Parker, tell us what's special about Columbia City.
That people work together and be kind to each other.
What do you want people to know about Columbia City?
I want them to know that Columbia City, there is really nice people here, and they take really good care of you.
Thank you. All right, tell us what you like about crew.
I like crew because you can do activities, and you can maybe make new friends.
All right, Mrs. Hozie, what is special about Columbia City?
What is special about Columbia City is our families and our crew here at Columbia City. We all stick together, we're one big community, and our families are excited to be here, they're excited about how personal we are, we know their kids, we know a lot about them, and just being one big group and one big family.
Why is it important to be in a crew?
It's important to be in a crew because it, it makes people work on teamwork, and, and it makes people feel belonging to a group, and...
What crew are you in?
I am in the Otter Power.
Otter Power, do you guys have a secret handshake?
Yeah.
What's that?
It's sign language, we have a good day, have a good day.
That's fantastic.
And it's really fun to be in there, and, yeah.
What do I... One last thing to share?
Yeah, just one last thing here. So we often in our, in our crews or in our morning meetings, we either open or close with our reading, and so I like to use this reading, it was from a colleague of mine, also works with EL Education. And he wrote, "It's been 25 years since I wrote this small book. Some of my life has not changed at all. I still live on top of a hill, a broken farm and small house that I built with my family, handcrafted out of local wooden stove. I still live in a tiny rural town where I was a public school teacher for decades. Almost every adult in my town is a former student. I'm still immensely proud of my students. My nurse is a former student. My plumber is my former student. The volunteer hired a private member is one of my former students. The test scores they got in sixth grade no longer matter to me, but I care deeply about their commitment to quality, courage, and compassion. My life depends on them. And even if you don't live in a small town, this is true for you as well. Your life depends on the high standards and kindness of the people who take care of you and your community, all of whom are someone's former students. It's a good reminder about what really matters in education."
All right, so thank you, we really appreciate your time. I appreciate families for bringing our kids and our Otters here.
Do you have anything you want to add some others? I'll let you know. You know, you're...
You guys should, and she's at Pito Lunch.
It's been great, you're all good to have. All right, you guys are welcome to go.
My otters would go.
Oh, all otters? You guys are a good group. So did you think I could have anybody else go? All right, well, then you guys just make a question. All right, well, then I guess it's up to you at 5.4, the policy.
Yes, we've got two final readings. 5.4, point one is the Superintendent CV. That was pulled off because we wanted to review and consider how it impacted local control. And Kelly and I met earlier and felt like it was reasonable, so that has not changed from previous readings, but JHC Student Health Services has made some adjustments. Me, like others, were uncomfortable with the wording that the policy had, and...
and we've got that in our packet. We've, we've struck out the wording and made some adjustments in the blue. Part of our concern is it talks about invasive, invasive physicals. And then it gives a pretty graphic description at the bottom. And our feeling, we've been thinking is there's no time in the public school district you would want to, or need to give any type of invasive physical. There is law that says any type of physical should be, must be pre-notification. So we've cleaned up the language in the blue to replace the paragraph below. So I will, well, I'll try to read from here, but like the young lady.
Whoa.
There we go. Stood order a little bit.
How you been learning fairly often? There you go.
Right, so I'll just, I'll read it and we all can read it. I'll, I'll read it from the record. As long as the law, the district will notify parents in advance of any non-emergency physical examination or screening administered and scheduled by the school in advance, such as vision screening, dental exam, or sports physicals, and not necessary to protect the immediate health and safety of the student or of other students. So we felt that a little clearer, a little more concise, gave a couple of examples. But even, for example, sports physicals. We, I'm not, I don't think we're offering them. Might offer them in our health centers. In years past, the school district did offer them, but they are optional. We actually named our stadium after Doc Akerson, who I think ran through thousands of physicals. Federally, there's no, there's no reason at the school district that we do that. So we tried to clean that up a little bit. We moved the bottom, I don't know if you can scroll it up, Christie. Removed the clarification of what an invasive physical is because we just won't work with any physical. So thoughts, comments, edits?
Definitely edits.
Twice.
You'll leave it.
My parents in advance. The first or the second.
Unless we can notify them in advance that we're in a schedule, it's an exam.
You are advanced. Tell them ahead.
One thing I will note, after the semicolon, I would remove the and and replace it with some other wording, such as it is not necessary. So.
Semicolon takes care of the and.
Yeah, it's just grammatical. Are you able to edit that? Thank you.
I actually have stuff on this. We decided to add, can you read me a little more?
Remove the and after the semicolon. Take the sem and replace it, maybe either leave it or replace it with some other wording.
Do you, can you just get, leave out the and not necessary because basically it says, or sports physicals.
Got the other thing.
All right, let's see here. According to the law, screening administered by schools such as, put a dot there, put a period. Boom.
Physicals.
Yeah, right there, after physicals.
Yeah.
Dot, there you go, we got a period. Okay, physicals not necessary. Now, what are we going to say about those? Are we going to say that?
Do we think we may have more, semicolon back?
Yeah.
Just maybe add the words after that, that it is, no, you don't want to do it.
So are we talking about things that are not necessary or are we talking about things that are necessary to protect immediate health?
We're saying anything more would be critical and performative nature.
So then you could say, examination is necessary to protect immediate health and things comes under another thing is, it would be.
It's essentially what it's trying to say, right? Is if there's an emergency in a child's life, it will be, depends on it.
Those events would still be done.
Okay, then so, so then you can say, you can leave a period there at the end of physical. Yep. And then you say, exams necessary to protect the immediate life, immediate health and safety of a student or of other students. And what are we, condition we, but I, no, sorry.
We don't have extra lines. So if you, we would go back to where it originally was.
Yeah, I think it's a new paragraph. Then, then after physicals, make it out of paragraph, drop that exams down.
And exactly, this is what you're going to say about the sport. You've got to finish it.
Right, are they covered under some other spot? Are they, are they dealing with law enforcement or medical professionals? Or they're not done by the school?
Or.
Well, it could be, right, it could be, we have.
I'm just thinking of some of our, we've got a terrible choking incident.
Our school nurse is there and puts it in a tray, but I don't know. But it's a school district employee. So it's like it would be a life-saving type.
It's an exclusionary phrase. So everything inside of this is what we're saying and all of the things that are excluded outside of that. So trying to create. Then it's just say, or other students, it may not be, may be notified after the event. I mean, you got to notify the parents, but you may have to notify them after the event because somebody's doing a life-saving event. You're doing CPR or you.
I would, let's go back to where it was and say, like, those necessary, not those necessary to protect the immediate, immediate health. I would remove.
Leave out the necessary?
But not those necessary. Like, we're excluding those.
Oh, okay.
Go back with semicolon, yeah. I want?
Yeah, because it's.
How about just say excluding those necessary? They said not those, just say excluding. I like that. Yeah.
Excluding, not including those.
Yeah.
Yeah, that sounds fair. I just want everybody to be afraid to do something in an emergency situation.
Yes.
Everything else okay, guys? We didn't want to make any changes on the other two paragraphs. They're a little bit. A whole lot better now than the way it was. Don't know.
Good. So when you move to a crew, we need to make sure we note that as revised.
We don't have that updated one in our packet, so this is refilled.
Yeah.
We begin with what we all just said.
Yeah, right, yeah, because I divided my seven and two.
Yeah. Okay, and then the first reading, 5.5.1 is use of alcohol for cooking. This is necessary with high-quality culinary arts programs. So we'll see E programs of the caliber that we currently have have a policy. The reason why we need to have a policy is when students use it for cooking, it's a violation of a number of laws unless we have this policy put in place. It's under lock and key, adults provisioned all times. But this is the first reading.
And you can't even have an alcohol corretion. What's that? You can't even have a little correted heater without this.
Chuck can like leave marcella lime ready or whatever. Nobody's really going to drink that.
It's not what they're using. No, it's not lime catered, it comes out in a, or lots of sharpened.
It'd be really hard pressed to drink that.
Yes.
I don't like it either way.
If it's in the samblioni, I guess.
Yeah.
Do they have any questions about it? All right, well, we did on everything else in that, it's done. Well, then we go on to 5.6, which is the state budget. So this is 5.25 of your current budget for the state. Great.
Yes, we just have our two standing items. We typically approve a budget calendar and then we also declare vacancies. So this budget calendar is for the 2324 budget, hence the date at the top. But very similar to last year's schedule, with the exception of moving up, I think we're moving up the interview selection. We need to have interviews, but like committee selection to February, with it being a biennial budget law legislative session, just doing a little bit of background work earlier in the year lends to a little bit smoother spring. And then we did reflect the request from, I believe, the board and budget committee members in including them, inviting them to be part of our February board meeting. And Scott will facilitate a roundtable with administrators to talk about building meetings so that the board can then develop budget priorities based off of the summation of that discussion. So, yeah, we have, you guys have a potential planning session in May, which is why we're deviating from our every other Wednesday in May schedule because it's a good place for there. So there's a little bit of a longer gap between the first and second budget committee meeting, but pretty status quo. That being said, we'll jump over to budget committee vacancies. We're able to fill two of our three-year vacancies last year. So we have Claire and Rachel onboard for two more years, but we still have three remaining vacancies, one of which has one year, great for a teaser. Someone wants to like try it out, budget maybe for a year and then take a break, but then the other two terms are three years. And so you just need to be a district of, resident of the district, so within our boundaries, and we'll have an application at the same level.
Yeah.
Jessica, for a clarifier again. The student that is 18 years of age or older currently enrolled, are they eligible to apply?
I'm so sorry, you can pull up the board policy because it specifies in there.
You could not remember.
I know, I read it. I should have printed it out to bring it.
I think it was a yes, as long as they're registered to vote, something. It was like.
I know the board policy explicitly.
I know it's a.
Says it.
I need to look, I think that would be fantastic, but I think it's like an employee being on the budget committee.
That's what I couldn't remember. You knew that there was specific to.
But let's look, because I think that would be fantastic to do that.
But they're representing a household.
Doesn't necessarily have to be like someone tied to the district such as a parent or it can be anyone who called who's in.
Because to live within the district's boundaries and I think be 18 years of age. Claire?
In years past, it's been a significant challenge to get these positions filled. Oftentimes, there's a lot of community discussion and conversation and questions. And I would, again, this year and the last year, challenge the community to fight within their time to step into this space, learn some more. Jessica does a phenomenal job of giving educational training at the beginning. Anyone absolutely no experience or knowledge about budgets or anything, just have them do the normal work. Spread the word and we'd love to have some people show up.
People also have to have people's report. All right, well, then on to 5.7. Thank you, Scott, for the opportunity.
A couple of things, Christie's, we've got my PowerPoint which you can load up. First, about the law, then curriculum adoption cycle. I want to mention a couple of things about construction.
Perfect, did you get all the concrete foot? Can't see it on the other side, first.
No, you're going to move the camera.
Down to the last set of columns, going towards a little bit. Then they have all the kitchen floor anyway to do this.
Okay, so what you're looking at is pretty standard, what we tend to look at on a regular basis. This is the actual student, so this isn't the weighted number. And I highlighted the totals there. The top total is what we currently have. The bottom total is what we had last year at this time. So if you look, we're actually up on the number of students. We've grown. And if you look at last year's, the first September, we had 2,822 students. And it's .5, right, because this is attendance. And so you can get a .5, it's not that we have half a day. It's a student who was in school half a day. So you could look, that, that was large and then dropped from 2822 to 2790 after September. My assumption is after some 10-day counts, after some kids selected to move to virtual schools or other programs. But if you look, watch the trend line, they average after that right around 27, well, 2775. It really doesn't dip much lower. And so I anticipate that we'll likely stay above 2,800. We're up by 32 students. It's not huge, but it's better than what many districts are seeing shrinking at will. So I thought that was an important thing to see. Because when you look at the next one, this is the weighted numbers, right? And the weighted numbers, the way we, we get funding from the state through budgeting is a student on special education gets weighted more than a student not. Same thing for ELL and there's a few other programs where we get additional weighting for a student. So we, the weighted, the ADMW is 2304, which is about 1% lower than what it was last year. There's a number of factors that, that could be, we may not have as many students in our ELL program or maybe a couple of additional students from our special education program graduated. And so the weighting has changed, but we're still up by 32 students. So I think that's important to note that there's the difference.
Thanks for that. There's also some state calculations that tie to federal data that we have no control over. And often you'll see that based off of the county poverty rate. We receive additional rates, but that can be a very volatile weighting that, you know, we still have the same amount of students, but they're using federal safety data to weight poverty. That can cause pretty significant fluctuations too.
Okay, so on to curriculum adoption cycle. This is the, the current material schedule. During COVID, they gave us a delay for ELA, which is English Language Arts and our ELL adoption. We delayed that. We are hopefully going to have the materials selected approved tonight so we can get those ordered. I know our teachers want to get them in their hands. During last year, staff were exhausted. We worked really hard to collaborate because this is a decision that teachers are heavily involved in. And about the last three meetings, folks were just exhausted and decided that, you know, let's postpone meeting and come back in the fall and make a decision. And so that's what we've done. That's why we're a little bit behind. And that's noted in our Division 22 standards as well. We're in the process, again, hopefully we'll have those approved tonight. You have a chance to take keep those. And then for right now, we're in the process of reviewing the math adoption. Really excited about the direction that, that team's moving and their active income and the talk and speed in January. Let me know the progress that they're making. We'll go to the next slide. So I wanted to review a little bit of the curriculum adoption. It's a cycle and it's a process that we go through. So the first thing is we start with a guiding question. How do we ensure that all children have access to all of this instruction? And that's kind of the guiding, well, the guiding question, right, our target. So from there, we go through this cycle. Gosh, I can't see the yellow very well. We start with a project team. Those are, we take applications from staff. We try to get a mix of grade level bands and representation from every school. We also have some administrators on that team. So we have a project team. The next step that they do is they do a standard review, then they review best practices. They develop a position paper which they've shared with you. And then they let them material selection. And then the most probably important piece is the ongoing professional development because it's one thing to get the materials, but then how best to use those with the students? So if you go to the next slide, the first thing that the project team does, go through a standard review. So go ahead and click a couple of times, Christie. They compare the old state standards to the new state standards. Usually there isn't much change. There wasn't a tremendous change this year either. The one thing that's important is you'll hear us continually refer to these as curriculum resource material adoption. And that's very specific because the state standards here are curriculum. This is what we're teaching and the materials that we're adopting support these standards. So we're not adopting a new curriculum per se because that's already given to us as the state standards. We're adopting material that fits our community that supports, that helps kids meet these standards. Go ahead and keep clicking through there. Go ahead and do again, again, get the next slide. There we go. So the next thing that we do after we review standards and align, we look at best practices. And so we call in professionals from outside the district to talk to staff about most current best practices in teaching literacy, reading and writing. And this person actually met a couple of times as a team and also presented district wide for our literacy teachers, this Dr. Getz. Go ahead and go to the next slide. We also do literacy reviews, do different readings. And the idea is we need our teachers that are gonna recommend the materials to be experts and up to date on most current promising practices. Go ahead and go to the next slide. So as we're aligning, we also want to make sure that they fit within our instructional framework. So this is just our structural framework that we use from cell group, Center for Educational Leadership. Go ahead and click again, the next one. This is the position paper we shared earlier last year, I believe it was. And this just makes a statement as what, what our school and teachers believe literacy education should be about. Go into the next page. After that, then we start reviewing. This is the publisher caravan videos. Some of the videos are the ones that have been pushed out to the public and for you to review. We try to narrow it down to two or three selections. Then we push it out to staff. Hopefully they have an opportunity to review them. We bring back that input and make a, make a final selection to recommend to board. Go ahead and go to the next. Before that, before we make the final recommendation to the board, though, we want to make sure that there's links on our webpage. So if community members want to review the materials, they're there and also we publish in our newsletter so folks can see that that's, that's going on. And go ahead and click the last one. And these are the official, which are curriculum material recommendations by the team. So McGraw Hill wonders for our elementary, open up resource, EL education for our middle school, and then Muzella, which is an online resource. The first three are already on state adoption, so they're vetted by the state. The other one, Muzella, has not, we can go ahead and adopt that as approved by the board and we'll present you with a document that shows how it meets all the standards. So that would be coming. Questions on English Language Arts?
I'm really excited about what you're doing in six three. For, for me, I mean, I did, I look at those little YouTube videos on Sunday night and watch those and to not do that would be close to criminal. But you have a program that's been going out for some time, so you're gonna get raw materials into the middle school that need to be further developed. They've already got some EL education and that style of learning. I've been able to witness it. I've gone to some of their PT stuff. You can, I've wandered through and looked at the classrooms. You see these kids in action and it's a learning style. And the great news is that, that you won't start with a whole bunch of kids that, you may have some that don't know, but you also have some that have grown up with this a little bit, more in the coming years than this year. Because I believe, did you start with the kindergartners or the K one twos, the little ones, didn't you? And, and those aren't, theirs aren't to middle school yet. But at least the fifth graders have a bit of this and, and know some of what's going on. And as the wee ones get up through there, we're gonna really see the advantage of that. And, and I just am excited. When I, I read this, I went, no, wait a minute, wait, this is actually EL stuff. So I'm very, I'm very excited for what, what's happening there. And, and I think the staff will, they, it takes, it takes training, but we have people that can help. And it takes a little effort to get buy-in sometimes, but that's okay. That's, that's why we have Wednesdays. That's why we have these things. And, and we also have success stories to share. So it's not like we're just popped up some new oddball idea. And those ideas are also, I think, gonna be showing up in the science education realm as they get ready to adopt. There's already some of that work going on and, and I, I can just see that this is pretty exciting stuff. It's, it's, it's the way kids actually learn and much more equitable than traditional work.
And the good news is it was the staff that the middle school needed that.
Yeah, I mean, it's, that's, to me, I mean, I, I looked at all, I looked at every one of those videos, or Stacy's not here, but I didn't realize they were active links. They're not short, in case you like twenty minute videos, but, but they're pretty exciting stuff, that's what we're getting. So I, I just want to say that my report and observation as a board member, looking at it, and I have been through more than one curriculum adoption as an educator. I, I'm excited to see what we're doing.
So the last little bit, district business, more of an info piece, right? On December twenty seventh, we will have the crane coming into the back of the high school and start lifting and putting on the trusses for the.
The big room lamps and trusses.
For the, I guess it'll be probably, I guess it'll be a couple of weeks worth of work, but that'll be exciting, seeing the cranes go back there and looking at stuff up. The, the one piece that we're still grappling with is, you know, we're.
Getting a permit.
Well, we, we got the permit, we're excited about that. Got the permit, the city was very gracious and helped us out, so we're ready to rock and roll with that. The, the big thing that we're grappling with is funding, right? With, with inflation, with the delays that we've had, we've talked about from supply chain. We've shrunk our scope, we've done, which word I hate, you know, the value engineering. We're, we're in a spot where we're moving forward, but there's some items that we've left off that I believe, and I think the board or community believe are, are super important. One of them, not all the HVAC is gonna be updated unless we find sufficient funds. There's some CTE improvements that we really like to do that have been left off. This may be the biggest, the parking lot needs to be addressed. So that is a, is a big ticket item that's not there. There's a couple of classrooms that we'd like to add. We want to see the auditorium updated and upgraded. And then right now, we've got in the budget, the sports fields for Title Nine compliance, but we want to do more than that. And that's something that we've all talked about. There's a couple of pathways there. We have property that we're looking to sell and planning to sell, that'll help. We could go into the general fund, which I would strongly caution on that. That's something that we want to avoid, but if we have to, we could. We could take out a loan, which again, is not something that I would be too excited about, but sometimes we have to do that. It's not common for a school district to do that to finish a project. And then the final one, which makes me really anxious, is we could consider a bond in May. I think there's some pathway forward on that and I'll try to get some information to see if that's something that the board would be willing to consider. I think there's a way to patch the bond because there's been a couple of years gone by since we sold the previous bonds and there's been growth in our community. I believe we could get to a point where we go out for a four million dollar bond. There's matching dollars from the state for four million dollars, which is, as I understand, is almost guaranteed at this point because there's eighty seven million dollars sitting in the state account for matching funds. So that would be great. So the potential to go out for a bond, no, no additional cost, the taxpayers wouldn't lengthen the time of the initial bond and potentially net not only four million dollars from the bond, but the state would give us another four million, so for a total of eight.
And you can qualify for that twice. Is it because it's a new school or is it because six years of time?
They were eligible last November, or last November.
Is it set at four million that they match or is there, is there money they match up to or is there? They match, depends on the size. And I don't remember the criteria. I've seen it matched, I believe, up to about eight million, but that's like when the beer didn't wanting out for, you know, seven hundred and eighty million dollars, those are just really large ones. My understanding, the last year or four election cycles, every school district that has applied and passed a bond to receive the additional matching funding of, well, up to four million.
If you have a one million dollar bond, you're gonna get one million.
If you got one million, but if you got four million, then you can max out the four million.
You might still get four.
Yeah, we got four billion off the forty nine million.
So that's my report, exciting stuff. More questions, other questions? You're saying that some of the CTE stuff possibly has to be cut? What exactly does that entail? Does that include shop prices? Does that include culinary arts? Does that, what does that include? And thanks for clarifying. It's not that we're cutting the program. We're like cutting like. Not cutting corners. Not improving. So, so like the culinary arts program is gonna be as close to a professional kitchen as possible. That's, that's in there. The medical CTE program where kids go through and leave with a CNA license and a pathway to the medical field, that's still in there. But there's, there's improvements within the facility of E building that we'd like to see. For example, we wanted to add classroom, the auto mechanics. That's, that's not in there. A shed for the. Equipment storage. Equipment storage or the wood shop is not in there. Now, as an example, when you have architects do things and design and our engineers, the shed, which we believe you could probably build for a hundred thousand dollars or less, is close to seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars when it's all said and done, when other folks do it. So there may be pathways for us as a community and a district to take care of that stuff later. And, and we would, I don't think we'd spend seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars on a.
Kitchen.
Did that answer your question? Yes.
We can still peel a lot of stuff off, just differently than necessarily first thought to do. Okay, one thing else? All right. All right, well, then move on to six point O, the visitor's dress board, it says tax of public comment on. All right. Okay, so now move to seven point O, action items. Do you need us to do the thing here, John?
I can move to approved seven point one point one CB and seven point one point two CHC as updated.
Second.
The main can accept, second and two accept seven point one point one and seven point one point two. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
None opposed? All right, so now move to seven point two to approve the twenty twenty three budget committee calendar.
I'm able to combine seven point two and seven point three and confirm approval.
Okay, then we can second and two approve seven point two and seven point three to approve a budget and declare the budget committee ready. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And last one, seven point four is ELA resource adoption.
I mean, sweetened.
No, I would say my say.
Oh, okay. All right. Well, then if we can second and two accept seven point four to ELA resource adoption, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And I am excited about it.
All right, so now eight point O, upcoming meeting. I do have a question, mine is.
Next one, first?
I think there was a discussion about activities that are going on.
There, there is, but we have a local review board, a curriculum board.
We can explain what that is.
It was the online.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's a Zoom meeting to cover the fact that, that Joe and a group of folks got money for developing safety videos. And Joe begins to find resources for us. And so since they've already done some work, then it's a lot easier to build single source and not, now that they've gone through the prototype to have to start saying, okay, now we're gonna start all over. And there's a, a team of schools and educators that are working on that, but it was, aren't they done by Mr. Ma?
I'm from the findings of that.
Yeah. I mean, for the people that are wondering, what's your Zoom meeting about the other stuff?
So we're not, we're not saying that bar five, that's part of the media, about that being in the.
Well, it's, it is a meeting.
It's advertised.
It's, yeah.
We're just not saying it here at that moment.
Yeah, it, it's not listed here.
That was at six, right? Over seven?
I did it six and five.
Six.
I may be a little late in, in meeting wise, getting along there.
And that day. Well, we're not in school, we shouldn't know happy about it.
And lastly.
We're wasting all this good snow on vacation.
Thank you, Peter, on your birthday.
I know I got my pizza on Sunday, Thursday.
Okay, I'm moving to adjourn. Second.
It is, but we can second to adjourn and head out for first three days.
Close.